For for John's.
We are now live, guys.
You want me up?
Cindy, can you hear me?
I can hear you. I'm getting things set up on our end.
That's great. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I just need another minute.
That's it.
It's having a little internet issue. Let's just go ahead and start.
You ready, Cindy?
We are ready.
Okay, so I'm going to begin the meeting. This is the regular city council meeting, City of St. Helena, Tuesday, April 28, 2020. I'm going to begin the meeting with the flag salute, and then I'll read a special paragraph or a paragraph related to the public access on these types of video conferencing. And then we're going to have some special comments immediately after that. But we'll begin with the flag salute. We can all remain seated. And if you want to mute your microphones, I will lead us through the flags salute. I have a small flag here with with me. And so if we begin that now, I will begin as while we place our hand on our hearts and repeat after me or with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, now we will move to a paragraph that I'm going to read. And this is in accordance with executive orders N dash 25 dash 20, N dash 29 dash 20, and guidance from the California Department of Public Health on gatherings. Remote public participation is allowed. We will address the order in the following ways. Members of the public may not physically attend meetings. The city council meeting will be livestreamed on Comcast Channel 28 and on the city's website, barring technical difficulties. Those members of the public wishing to participate must do so remotely via Zoom electronic meetings in the following ways: by either logging on to the Zoom link located on the meeting agenda, please download the app to your computer or mobile device and enter the meeting ID, or by calling a listed number and enter the meeting ID. Public comment for city council meetings will be accepted via email to publiccomment@cityofstanhelena.org. Ms. Nixon, do you have any additional information for us?
No, Mayor Ellsworth, you did a wonderful job explaining how members of the public can participate again.
Okay, very good.
If you're joining, if you're joining the meeting by Zoom, I just want to remind everyone that there is a little raise hand feature that you can use when the mayor calls for public comment. If you're calling in from the telephone, you can use star nine. So thank you, Mayor Ellsworth.
Thank you. And we will do the roll call now, please.
Mayor Ellsworth?
Here.
Vice Mayor Doring?
Here.
Councilwoman Ruchetoe?
Yes.
Knutson?
Present.
Oversteen?
Here.
And do we have everybody? My my audio cut out there a little bit. Cindy, do we have everybody?
Yes, Al is present.
Okay. We're going to move forward. Now, this meeting is going to begin with a very somber tone as we want to take a moment to honor the life and spirit of a young person that we recently lost. And Councilperson David Knutson has some words for us now.
Yeah, I just, the community has really come together to to recognize what a special and lively young woman Emma Fife was. I had the privilege of knowing her quite well. It's a little tough to actually think that she's gone. But she really, she was such a spirited young person, and she just couldn't get enough of, you know, she was always trying to do so many things in her life. And our hearts really go out to her mother Karen McNeil and her husband. And not all of us get to travel through the period between when we're young and adulthood. And if I may proffer, her father Dennis Fife was also a lovely man, and he died four years ago of cancer. And I think that was also quite difficult for Emma. But she was a lively person. She was always rushing from one activity to another. And she was so eager. She used to call our house very early in the morning on the weekends just to roust my daughter and start the day of fun activities. And I'm going to hold her in my heart, and I know the community will too. It's it's a tragedy for Emma and her family, and it's a tragedy for our town. I also think that this is a chance for us to really think about mental health in our community, particularly as we're all self-isolated. And also, I think we need to think about sort of our alcohol and drug usage in town and to think about what we can do for, to to address, to address any issues there there might be. I really want to have some positive things. Besides remembering Emma, I just want some other positive things to come out of this. I'd like to propose or simply remember her for a brief minute, and then we can move on to the rest of the agenda. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. This is why we're a community, because together we can face whatever challenges come forward. It's going to be hard moving into this meeting. But we will keep Emma in our, her spirit in our hearts, and she will be a part of this town forever. And with that, thank you, and we'll move now. I have some, I have some comments just in general about the current. I'm just getting, I think, am I coming through Cindy okay?
You were, you cut out a couple times. But I encourage anyone, if you have any technical difficulties, to make sure and just call in, and at least you will be heard via audio.
Okay, very good. So I just want to check in with the community on this coronavirus COVID-19 situation. We are doing things right. We have brought the curve down. We are moving forward. We're not out of the woods yet, and so I want to encourage the community to stay focused. Certainly, as we get into May and mid-May, we are waiting for direction from the state, from the governor's office that comes down through the county to us. I'm working on a statement with the city manager and with the county in terms of language to help sort of explain to our community how the authority comes down from the state to the county, to the cities, and how we are working together with all the other cities in Napa County and the county itself, with the Director of Public Health in establishing these orders and following them. We want the community to know, I want the community to know that we've done an excellent job thus far, but we are not finished. And we need to continue with the shelter at home, the social distancing, the enhanced hygiene, until we get the all clear. And that is what I would ask of the community in these very challenging times, to keep focused until we get the all clear and can start moving back towards more normalcy. We will get there. And it's encouraging hearing the governor speak the last few days. I think we are getting there, but we're not there yet. So I want to encourage us all to help each other, stay focused, and stay staying strong and staying calm here for the next number of weeks as we, as things sort of maybe start to resolve a bit. I want to mention the Napa Valley Community Foundation. This is an organization that accepts donations locally and then disperses those funds back out to the community where the need is greatest. This is a place where we can all participate. We don't have to be rich to do this. We just have to have a little bit extra. And if all of us pitch in at whatever level we can over these next weeks, when a pay period, the beginning or the middle of the month comes up, if this fund has been bolstered, they have more to help others in need. So I just would like to encourage the community to go to the Napa Valley Community Foundation website and and look at how you can donate. It takes about five minutes. And I would just encourage us all who have a little extra to to put into the system. And so with that, I'm going to move and ask for reports and just ask the community to hang in there and and keep pushing forward, and we will get through this. So I'm going to move first to our city attorney and see if there's a report out from our closed session.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. The city council had a closed session immediately prior to this evening's regular meeting, and there's no reportable action at a closed session.
Okay, I'm sorry, we're going to go back to our public forum. I made my comments before that, these special comments related to COVID-19. So the correct order now is we will go to public forum. And I will see, I will open that and see with the, check with the city clerk if there's anybody on the line.
Mayor Ellsworth, we do have someone who would like to speak. I am going to unmute this person, and they can state their name, and I will start the clock.
Okay, very good. And they have four minutes, please. Thank you.
Hello, this is Jim Sweeney. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Good evening, Jim Sweeney, 1407 Kearney Street in St. Helena, Mayor, City Council, City Staff, our Chief Sorenson. What I wanted to try to share is that we, the citizens, know that you, the city council, have some very, very difficult budgeting and project prioritization decisions to make over the next few weeks. The compressed tax revenues likely well into next fiscal year will force tough decisions on you and which projects you can support, which might need to be deferred. I just want to suggest that with your support, the city's leadership, and the incredible spirit and generosity of our community, which could include skills, labor, materials, possibly financial support at some level, that we can all work together to advance some of these projects to get over the line. Organizations such as the Rotary, the Boy Scouts, the Ad Boosters, the Odd Fellows, many others, have a proven track record of stepping up when needed, and I'm sure we're all prepared to do it again now. So we're we're keenly aware that some local improvement priorities under review may have to be deferred. And I'm simply suggesting that please keep an open mind to city-community partnerships, and don't count us out, the citizens, to help you making those tough decisions. St. Helena was built by hard work and spirit of our founding families, and I'm sure that we want to contribute again. Per Councilman Knutson's editorial comments this past week, we just asked, keep us in mind, we are totally here to help through this difficult decision process that you're about to head into. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the comments. Ms. Nixon, is there anybody else in our public for comment section, public forum section?
Mayor Ellsworth, I am not seeing any more raised hands. Thank you.
Very good. Well, I will close the public forum. I'll bring it back to reports by staff and city council. And so we had a report from the city attorney that there was, I'm sorry, how are you reporting that out again?
There was no reportable action at a closed session.
Okay, very good. And then I will move to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council members. Just wanted to say thank you to our staff. We have staff working in the field, fire station, police officers. A number of staff have been redeployed to share some of their daily job duties and also serving in our emergency operation center. And I just want to say thank you for all the work they're doing to keep our operation moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Our finance director?
Mayor Ellsworth, council members, thank you. I just wanted to remind the public and the council that on May 14, at 9:00 AM till noon, we'll have our first budget study session for fiscal year '21. And then we anticipate having another follow-up session on May 28 for the, excuse me, for the same timeframe. Thank you.
May 21 and 28?
May 13 and May 28.
13, 28. Very good. Thank you. Okay, we will then move to our city clerk.
Nothing to report.
Public Works?
I'd like to report that on Monday, May 4, the downtown restroom groundbreaking will start. So half the parking lot will be not utilized, so the contractor can start getting there and getting utilities started. In addition, city staff has started work on the sewer main upgrade at Brown Streets, about 300 feet of sewer main, that they're replacing. So that works underway at the end of Brown, just west of Allison. And then they're also doing work out at Crane Park and Miley Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Our planning and building department?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. This is just a brief reminder of the joint meeting of the, excuse me, the planning commission and the council on May 5 at 6 o'clock. That joint meeting will be to discuss our comprehensive zoning code update. It will be a full presentation by Lisa Weiss Consulting, and we're working on a lot of social media and outreach to make sure we have a really high participation and to make sure people understand how to access the project via Zoom and participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Our safety officers, Mr. Sorenson?
Anything? Okay, you hear me all right now?
Yep.
Yeah, I have nothing to report.
Okay. Councilmembers, Councilmember Knutson? Councilmember Chutou? Councilmember Cobenstein?
I have nothing.
Mr. Councilmember Doring, Vice Mayor Doring?
Thank you. I wanted to just take a moment to thank Councilmember Knutson for the comments he made. They're very heartfelt, and I much appreciate them. I just wrote down two paragraphs on the same subject matter that I'd like to express, if you would indulge me.
Please.
On behalf of Kara and my children, Tavi and Leah, I would like to offer our love and prayers to Emma's mom, Karen, and to her other family members, Emma's classmates, friends, teammates, coaches, teachers, and all who have been devastated by her tragic loss, including David and his family. I am quite aware that words alone cannot match the depths of your sorrow, nor can they heal your wounded hearts. Please know that whatever measure of comfort we can offer, we will offer. Whatever portion of sadness that we can share with you to ease this heavy burden, we will gladly bear it. You are not alone.
Thank you, Mr. Doring. With that, my comments again are, are that we are together in this, all of us. And it is because we are together that we can carry on through. So thank you, everybody, for your strength and and your focus, because we will get through this together. So thank you. With that, I will move on now to item 6.1. And this is presentations and public recognitions. This is SB 1383 Short-lived Climate Pollutants Regulations. This is an overview and local preparations by Christie Pestoni Abreu, Community Outreach Coordinator at Upper Valley Disposal and Recycling, and Amanda Griffiths, Environmental Resource Specialist at Napa County Public Works. And this is being queued up for us, Ms. Nixon?
Amanda, you should be able to see the presentation now.
Yes, I can see it. Did I unmute myself successfully?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Am I good to start?
Yes. Are you?
Okay, okay, perfect. Yes, well, I'm Amanda, and I am staff with the Upper Valley Waste Management Agency and also staff of the Napa County Public Works. So today, I'm going to be presenting, going to be presenting a little bit on an upcoming state law, SB 1383. And it's the most significant waste reduction mandate to be adopted in California in the last 30 years. And it's going to require California to reduce organic waste disposal and landfills by 75% by 2025. So in other words, that means California must reduce organic waste disposal by more than 20 million tons annually by 2025. And Tower Cycle defines organic waste as food, green material, landscape and pruning waste, organic textiles and carpets, lumber, non-hazardous wood, paper products, printing and writing paper, manure, bio solids, digestate, and lettuce. It's a pretty long list. The law also requires California to increase edible food recovery by 20% by 2025. And it establishes a statewide target and not just a jurisdiction organic waste recycling target. So as you could guess, this law is going to have significant financial policy and legal implications for local government. And then one thing I'll mention before I kind of get further into it is where the responsibilities of the Upper Valley Waste Management Agency and its member jurisdictions are still being determined. However, individual jurisdictions will likely have a, have to play a role of some sort. And I'll also read to you what Tower Cycle's definition of a jurisdiction is. And it means that a city or county, or a city and county, or a special district that provides solid waste handling collection services, a city or county or a city and county or a special district may utilize the Joint Powers Authority to comply with the requirements of this chapter, except that the individual city, county, or city and county or special district shall remain ultimately responsible for compliance. And in my presentation, I use jurisdiction just to make it a little bit easier, but this is the official definition of jurisdiction. So I'll get started on my second slide here. So Tower Cycle started the formal regulation rulemaking in January 2019. And the current comment period ends May 20, 2020. And Tower Cycle does not anticipate any delays or changes to the current regs. And the current drafts that they released have not had any substantial changes from the previous one that they released, I believe it was late last year, about the fall. So jurisdictions must have their programs in place on January 1, 2022. And Tower Cycle can begin enforcement actions on jurisdictions and other entities starting also on January 1, 2022. And the enforcement process on jurisdictions is different than under AB 939. Regulated entities such as the city or county can be issued a violation and be subject to enforcement for failure to comply with any individual aspect of this regulation. And this is different from the unique AB 939 enforcement structure where jurisdictions' overall efforts to achieve a specific target are reviewed. And in 2024, jurisdictions will be required to take enforcement action against non-compliant entities, which is business or organic waste generators not separating organic waste for compost. And in 2025, as a whole, California must achieve a 75% reduction in organic waste disposal and 20% food recovery for human consumption targets. We can move to the next slide. And you'll see here, they have kind of a breakdown of the six main categories of SB 1383. And jurisdictions will be required to adequately resource these programs. And the first is providing organic waste collection services to all residents and businesses. And this means collection service for all organic waste. Containers must have prescribed colors, which is gray or black for trash, green for organic waste, and blue for traditional recyclables. The second is jurisdictions must establish edible food recovery programs for all Tier 1 and 2 commercial edible food generators. And this means ensuring that there are edible food recovery organizations that have enough capacity. And just some quick examples, Tier 1 would be supermarkets, grocery stores with 10,000-plus square feet or wholesale food markets. And Tier 2 will be restaurants with 250-plus seats or more than 5,000 square feet or hotels with 200-plus rooms or food on site. The third is conducting education and outreach to all generators. So that will require education to be provided to all generators when application, or when applicable, education may need, must be provided in Spanish and other languages. The fourth is jurisdictions must procure certain levels of recovered organic products. And I'll go into a little bit more detail on that on another slide. Jurisdictions must plan and secure access, organics, recycling, and edible food recovery capacity. And jurisdictions must monitor compliance, conduct inspections, and also conduct enforcement. And overall, for record keeping, all documents, which is ordinances, inspections, education, procurement, enforcement, et cetera, must be stored in one location easily accessed by Tower Cycle. And upon request, jurisdictions must provide access to Tower Cycle within 10 business days. We can go on to the next slide. So this law extends beyond directing waste management and recycling operations staff. Each department will need to understand how SB 1383 impacts their work, record keeping, and reporting requirements extend to all of these departments. And jurisdictions leaders will play a vital role in ensuring compliance with SB 1383. And I won't go into too much detail on here, but you can see on this slide all the different departments that could potentially be involved with 1383 implementation regarding the Waste Management Agency and as well as St. Helena City Department. We'll go on to the next slide. So let's talk a little bit more about procurement than I mentioned earlier. So each jurisdiction will have a minimum procurement target that is linked to its population. Tower Cycle will notify jurisdictions of their target prior to January 1, 2022. And the jurisdiction can decide what mix of compost, mulch, biomass, drive electricity, or renewable gas they want to use to meet their target. SB 1383 also requires that jurisdictions procure recycled content paper when it is available at the same price or less than virgin material. And finally, procured paper products must meet FTC recyclability guidelines. So essentially, products must be, that are purchased must be recyclable. Move on to the next slide. So jurisdictions will have to adopt So jurisdictions will have to adopt an ordinance or other enforceable requirement that requires compliance with Cal Green and water efficient landscape ordinance requirements. So this includes providing readily accessible areas for recycling containers in commercial and multifamily units, providing organic waste commingled with CND debris to meet the Cal recycle 65% diversion requirement for CND recycling in both residential and non-residential projects. And lastly, require new construction and landscaping projects to meet water efficient landscape requirements for compost and mulch application. Go to the next slide. In California today, there are about 180 compost facilities, with 34 of them accepting food waste. It will take a significant number of new facilities to recycle an additional 20 to 25 million tons of organic waste annually. CalaCycle estimates 50 to 100 newer expanded facilities are needed. And after I finish my portion of this presentation, Christie Pestoni with Upper Valley Disposal will keep on the improvements being made to their facility to meet SB 1383 requirements for organic waste collection and processing. And go on to the next slide. So, by January 1, 2022, jurisdictions are required to have an enforcement mechanism or ordinance in place, yet they are not required to enforce until 2024. Between January 2022 and December 2023, jurisdictions need to identify businesses in violation and provide educational materials to those generators. After January 2024, jurisdictions shall take progressive enforcement against organic waste generators that are noncompliant. The jurisdiction has the flexibility to develop its own enforcement process. The regulation set a minimum penalty amount of at least $50 for the first offense within one year and can go up to $500 a day for multiple offenses within one year. We'll go on to the next slide. Okay, so this slide shows the various aspects of the law that require detailed record keeping. And some of these will lie with the Waste Management Agency, and some of these will lie with City of St. Helena. So jurisdictions will have to maintain all information in an implementation record. The implementation record needs to be stored in one central location. And there are penalties from CalaCycle to, or if records are not maintained or they are not provided access to implementation records. Let's see, and go on to the, my last slide here. So, the last one is a little bit on CalaCycle state enforcement over jurisdiction. So, CalaCycle will evaluate if jurisdiction is compliant. If CalaCycle determines a jurisdiction is violating one or more of their requirements, a jurisdiction will be noticed and will have 90 days to correct. Most violations should be able to be corrected in this timeframe. For cases where the jurisdictions may need a little additional time, this timeframe can be expanded to 180 days. For violations that are due to barriers outside the jurisdiction's control and which may take more time to correct, the regulations allow for the jurisdiction to be placed on a corrective action plan allowing up to 24 months to comply. That is my very quick overview on 1383. So, I can turn it over to Christie unless we want, if there's any questions I should take first.
Are there any questions from the council? Seeing none, we will move on. Thank you very much for the presentation. Christie, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thanks, Amanda. Can you guys hear me okay? Okay, good. I just wanted to say that we are preparing our facilities to meet the 1383 requirements and we should, by the end of summer, Clover Flat will be permitted by the Air Resource District to compost on top of an area of the landfill that we're not utilizing for landfilling. And it will be separated with a separate wastewater collection program. And it will be doing the aerated static pile composting system there. We're also updating the permits at the composting facility on Whitehall Lane. And hopefully, by the end of the year, maybe even as soon as October, we'll have the ability to have the extended permits to allow us to bring in food waste at that facility. And then the residents would, the program would expand to residential co-collected, meaning food and green waste. You'd be allowed to put cooked food waste in your green waste. Right now, you're able to put any kind of garden vegetable or uncooked type greens and banana peels and apple cores. All that can go in your green container now. But moving forward with the 1383 regulation, you'll be able to add all types of food waste products and soiled papers as well. One of the other things we've already started to do is the 1383 has a standardized color. As you saw in the slides, that's for the entire state. So no matter where you travel throughout the state, you will always know that the gray can or the black can is garbage, the green is organic, and the blue is for recycling. And so that's actually going to help with the language barriers and just the media messaging to be consistent. Cal recycle has a plan to come out with a whole messaging program and decal program. And so it's actually going to help clean up the waste stream on all fronts. The other thing that you're going to see is what we call like the garbage police. So, we will start implementing lid flips and doing route checks and getting out and making sure that only organics are in the organic bin, and there's no organics in the blue bin, and there's no organics in the black bin. So, we tag carts now when we see something wrong, but we're actually physically going to have to have a team that goes out and, you know, issues tickets. So, with that, I can answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? Ms. Chateau?
Thank you, Christie. That's super exciting to hear about this coming and how ready you are. What is the deal with the tickets? How much will they be for people?
Well, the jurisdiction, which means Amanda and the JPA group, will probably, they'll be the ones that identify what a ticket is and how much is that? And do you get three strikes before you get a ticket? In some communities in the Bay Area, they're already issuing the tickets. You know, it could be like a $10 charge. You clean it up. If we have to clean it up and it's, you know, it could be up to a $10 charge. But I don't know, it's up to the jurisdiction to decide.
Okay, and then also, I didn't hear, when is this going to happen? When are we going to be able to do the organic waste?
I'm hoping before the end of this year.
Before the year. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions?
If I might just add, since I didn't talk at the beginning during open comment, but just to give you a little update about COVID and our business, because we've had a few changes. We did send information out in our bills. But we do have reduced office hours. We're not taking payments, walk-in payments right now. We do have a box outside that people can leave payments in, and they can call us on the phone if there's a problem. And we have stopped the buyback program at Clover Flat where people sell their bottles and cans. Most of the buybacks throughout the state have stopped just because of the social distancing and also the fact that the bacteria can live for a few hours, maybe even up to 24 hours. Most of the material that we're taking in from you is sitting for 24 hours before it's being processed. So currently, we have plenty of PPE, but many of the haulers in the Bay Area are running out of masks. And so we are making requests to our state legislators and the governor's office about ensuring that the sanitation workers will continue to have a supply of PPE so they can continue to do their work. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, comments? I just want to say thank you, and if you can pass it along as well to your employees for working through this and being there in the middle of this and continuing forward. So, we want to thank you and thank your employees for working forward. It's really appreciated.
Thanks, Jeff. I'll pass that along.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay. We're going to move on now. Thank you for being here, and we will move now to staff briefing. This is 7.1. This is update on our wastewater treatment plant upgrade project by Erica Smithies, our Public Works Director and City Engineer. Thank you.
Thank you. This week, as you know, we, last week, we submitted the, released the request for proposals for environmental consultants to help complete the secret and eco process for the plant to accompany the design by hydro science engineers. In addition, we're looking at another request for proposals out for the equipment for the package plant. So that should be coming out pretty soon. Nothing more to update on the plant right now.
Any questions from the council? Thank you very much. This is excellent news. This is moving forward. And again, I think it shows that a focus of our staff to continue forward on these very important projects even in the middle of this situation. So, thank you. We'll move to 7.2. This is the Upper York Creek Dam Project Update, also by Ms. Smithies.
Yes, Friday of last week, we received our first permit, which was the encroachment permit from the county. I want to thank the county for expediting their permit. Took about a week for their review. We've issued one addendum on the project. It's out to bid currently. We received a draft Fish and Wildlife Agreement this week from California Fish and Wildlife. We're reviewing it, making sure it's succinct with the rest of the requirements in the project plan and specs that are out to bid. We also saw a glimpse of the water board 401 certification. So, we're trying to make sure everything of those align. In addition, we have a job site walk through tomorrow on the Spring Mountain Vineyard side. We hope to have an agreement reached with Spring Mountain Vineyards in the next couple of weeks that we could bring back to City Council for approval. Again, the bid's open on May 26, so pending no, no, May 20th. So pending there are additional changes, we hope to come to council soon with a bid award. And I think that's it for now.
Thank you. If I could just quickly add to that, I believe we also had a mandatory pre-bid meeting, and we had a very good turnout.
Oh, great.
Yes, we did. We had. Eight of nine pre-qualified contractors attend the pre-bid last week. So that was good news, that we still had eight interested in the, in the project.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you for moving forward on this as well. Okay, so with that, we will move to consent items. This is where members of the council or the public may ask that any items be considered individually for purposes of considering alternative action for extended discussion or for public comment. Unless that is done, one motion may be used to adopt all recommended actions. I'm going to read through the numbers of the consent items, and if anybody wants one pulled. Has there been any communication from the public on this, Cindy or Priya?
Mayor Ellsworth, right now, I don't see any raised hands.
Okay. So I will read through, and if there's anybody from the council wanting to pull an item, please let me know. We'll start with 8.1, 8.2, 8.3, 8.4, 8.5.
Please read the full title, Mr. Mayor, for 8.5.
8.5. Cindy, which one?
Yes, please. 8.5.
Okay, it's a long one here. Consideration and proposed approval of a resolution, one, approving amendment number two to the updated employment agreement, STH contract 2019-092, entered into as of May 28, 2019, between the City of St. Helena and John Sorensen to serve in a temporary full-time assignment as fire chief during the COVID-19 local emergency effective April 12, 2020, and to remain in effect for the duration of the local health emergency or return to prior staffing schedule. And two, in accordance with the requirement of California Code Section 5953(c)(3), approving the recommended final action for the fire chief to serve in this full-time capacity with a temporary annualized base salary of $176,800. And three, increased prorated fringe benefits to full vacation accruals, holiday pay, and executive leave. And four, duly adopting and approving publicly available pay schedules in accordance with the requirement of California Code of Regulations Title II, Section 570.5, to include the temporary assignment annualized salary for the fire chief. That's 8.5. And 8.6 is the final of the consent items. Seeing none that want to be pulled, I would entertain a motion on all the, on passing all the items.
I move that we approve the consent items.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
And a roll call, please.
Councilmember Chateau?
Yes.
Koberstein? Knudsen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Doring?
Yes.
Mayor Ellsworth?
Yes. So with that, we will move now to public hearings. This is item 9.1. This is introduction and first reading of an ordinance amending Title 13, Public Services of the St. Helena Municipal Code in consideration of a resolution approving city council, city council policy P-F1 or FI-0019, disconnection of water service for non-payment to comply with SB 998 mandates. And this is prepared by Jennifer Weeks. Is she with us?
Here will actually be me taking this.
Okay, very good.
Great. Thank you, councilmembers and Mayor Ellsworth. So what this public hearing is doing is the introduction of first reading of a new ordinance amending the title in connection with disconnection of water services. This particular bill does require that all public water systems have a written policy on water service discontinuation for non-payment. The city did currently have a policy through its written ordinance. However, we did not have a separate standalone policy. In addition, SB 998 does require certain stipulations before water can be shut off for residential services. And so that's just, this ordinance change is doing is actually establishing our ordinance to be in conjunction with the SB 998 guidelines, as well as establishing our formal written policy in accordance with our guidelines. For the adoption of SB 998, or any, any utility agencies that have over 200 connections, this does have to be in place by 2020, or by April of 2020. If it is not, then it just means we can't shut off water service. And as we know, right now with COVID-19, we're not shutting off water service anyway. And so this item, the recommended action tonight, is to introduce and conduct the first reading of the draft ordinance by title only and wait for the reading. And in addition, adopt a resolution approving the city council policy specifically as it concerns for the discontinuation of water service for noncompliance to be in compliance with SB 998 mandates. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from council, or comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. I'll go to public comment. Do we have anybody in line for public comment?
Mayor Ellsworth, I am looking right now, and I am not seeing any members of the public with raised hands.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'll bring it back to the council. The recommendation is to introduce and conduct the first reading of the draft ordinance, attachment one by title only and wait for the reading. And two, adopt a resolution approving city council policy P-F1-0019, F, I'm sorry, P-FI-0019, disconnection of water service for non-payment to comply with SB 998 mandates. Is there a motion on this recommendation?
I'll move approval of the staff recommendation as stated in the staff report.
I'll second.
Very good. And a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Doring?
Yes.
Councilmember Chateau?
Yes.
Koberstein?
Yes.
Knudsen?
Yes.
Mayor Ellsworth?
Yes. Very good. So with that, we'll move past old business, seeing none. We'll go to new business, 11.1. This is consideration and approval of an urgency ordinance temporarily suspending sections 3.28 and Point 070 and 3.28 Point 080 of the St. Helena Municipal Code concerning payments of transient occupancy of transient occupancy tax and declaring that the urgency thereof. And this is Ms. Metz, our finance director.
Thank you again. This particular item is a follow-up to the last council meeting with council direction given to support the idea of actually doing a deferral of the TOT revenues. And so this particular urgency ordinance, what it would do is it would extend any payments for TOT revenues for January, February and March of 2020. And those are not, if approved, that will defer those payments until June 30th. So council is aware for January and February, January is completely paid up. For February, we have all the three hotels and STRs that have paid on the TOT. And then for March, as we know, we closed down about mid-month. And so what it would do is it would just defer the payments of those three months, whatever's left over for until June 30th. In addition, it will also defer any payments for TOT collected in April, which we know that's zero. For May, potentially zero, depending on if we're allowed to open back up. And then June, which would actually be due by July 31st. What this ordinance does, we are not allowed to defer the TID payment, which is a 2% payment. So any hotel or STR operator still would be required to complete the TOT and TID forms. So at that point, we, we will at least know how much revenues we should, we should be expecting and that we can actually count on our books, even with the deferral until July 2020, we can still count it for our revenues for fiscal year 20. The proposed ordinance does not affect waiver amend any other taxes, as I stated regarding the TID. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but our recommendation is to approve this urgency ordinance with further deferral of TOT.
Thank you. Are there any initial comments or questions from council? Mr. Knutson?
Hi, April. Great. Thank you. I, I will make a comment that actually our second homes are full in town. And some of those are rented out. So certainly for the month by month, we get no TOT. I don't know if we have any short-term rentals that are rented out that we, we would get TOT.
Okay.
Yeah, that I do, I do not know, but by requiring them to complete the paperwork, we would find out that information.
They're, they're not permitted. We have a cap on the number of short-term rentals and so they would not be permissible. It would not be permissible and the city has no revenue opportunity. No, no, I meant, I, I meant that the existing short-term rentals, are they not allowed to rent? And what if they had, you know, the short-term rentals, if they were to rent for a month, that we would still collect TOT if they were part of the short-term rental program, correct? Yes.
Other council comments, questions? Okay, I will open it to public comment. Ms. Nixon, are we seeing any public comment at this point?
Mayor Ellsworth, I am looking right now to see if we have any raised hands. And at this time, I am not seeing any raised hand. Thank you.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the council. I'll, I'll close public comment. Any final thoughts? If, and if not, I'll, Mr. Doring?
I was a little bit confused with the interaction between council member Knutson and city manager regarding the renting out short-term rentals. I was under the impression that that was not legal. Is that not the case?
No, that's correct.
Under the quarantine?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, and so bringing it back to the council, if, if there's no further discussion, is I, I would entertain a motion on the recommendation, on the staff recommendation?
I move that we approve the staff recommendation.
I'll second.
And a roll call, please.
Councilor Chateau?
Yes.
Cobberstein?
Yes.
Knutson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Doring?
Yes.
Mayor Ellsworth?
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to item 11.2. This is request of form a council ad hoc subcommittee for Farmstead Development Agreement. And this is prepared by Maya De Rosa, our planning and building director. Mr. Rosa?
Hello, good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Yes, the item before you tonight is to appoint two members of the council to form a subcommittee for, or an ad hoc subcommittee to help navigate the Farmstead Development Agreement. As most of you are aware, the applicant did file an application with the planning department to permit the future construction of a 65-room lodging establishment. On February 26th, we did receive the first draft of the development agreement from Mr. Hall. And so, and generally familiar with development agreements that would cover everything from, you know, commitments for infrastructure, funding, paying of fees and of, and of course, affordable housing requirements. What we envision is that the ad hoc committee would work alongside staff in the review of the development agreement and also participate in the negotiation meetings with the applicant. I have a couple of dates that I've lined up for tentative schedule going forward after tonight. We're looking to distribute the draft development agreement to our subcommittee, ad hoc subcommittee by the 30th of this week, that'd be Thursday. And then tentatively on May 6th, we'd look to have a meeting with staff, the ad hoc subcommittee and our city attorney to, so that'd just be an internal meeting to discuss comments. Then we would follow that up with a tentative date of May 11th to meet with the applicant, the ad hoc subcommittee and staff. And then, and then at that point, we just see where we are. If we're close to settling on the key deal points, then the, the next big milestone that the developer's looking for is the release of the mitigated negative declaration. So, so that's kind of where we are today and that concludes my briefing and I'm available for any questions or comments.
Are there any comments or questions from council at this point? Okay, seeing none, I will then open it to public comment and, oh.
I just have one question. Does the entire council get to see the development agreement when it first comes out? Or is it only the subcommittee that sees it when it's first issued?
I'll, I'll respond and Mark, feel free to add on, but when we had our, had our initial discussions, we thought we would just include the ad hoc subcommittee members initially. And the idea is that by having those members involved early on in the process, when it does come to the full council for a public hearing, the, if there's questions or what are the key points of why we decide certain things, there would be, you know, a, a, a voice for the council in terms of where we landed. But Mark, do you have anything to add to that in terms of how that could evolve?
No, but I would invite the city attorney to comment as well if she would like. I think the alternative is a council discussion and open session about the, the development agreement in its entirety.
And Mark, would you, would that come after the subcommittee work? Is that your thought?
The, the concept is we would use a subcommittee approach, but the alternative would be to have a council, a full council discussion on the drafts.
Are there thoughts from the council at this point? Did I, did I open it for public comment yet? No. Okay, so why don't we do that? See if there's anybody in the, in the queue. Ms. Nixon?
Mayor Ellsworth, I'm looking right now to see if there is anyone who's raising their hand in the public and I am not seeing anyone. Thank you.
Okay, well, I'll bring it back to the council now and close the, close the public comment. I have at some point, some comments that I would like to put in that maybe are, are also relevant to the financial task force. I don't know when the appropriate time for that is with, with these, these different approaches. Mr. Presswich and Mr. Rosa, what, what are the sort of opportunities for, for the full council to look at the development agreement? What are your thoughts in terms of balance of which, what approach is best?
I, I'll, I'll start with just my, my experience working in other jurisdictions. In, in the other example, there's been two other examples where I've been involved in a development agreement review. And it primarily was led by staff and the city attorney in, in multiple meetings with the developer team and their, their representative attorney. And then it would, when the deal points were solidified, it would go to the planning commission. And the planning commission would review it and make a recommendation to the council on, you know, there were maybe some parts of the, of key, whether it be the fee structure or other opportunities for the city to have additional benefits. They would, they would add those recommendations to the council and then the council would consider them and, but it would be in a public hearing, a public comment. And, and sometimes it would take multiple meetings to, to navigate that. But, you know, this is, this is your city and, and, you know, we can make something work for what works, what's, what's most comfortable for the council. So those are my comments.
This is Kara. If I could just add maybe a little bit of context perhaps, I think the recommendation to form an ad hoc subcommittee is coming to the council at this point because the idea is that the development agreement is still in the stage of negotiations. And so the ad hoc council subcommittee would help the staff with those negotiations and kind of the input would help inform those discussions and those negotiations. I think if the DA were to come to the council as a whole, we would probably want to bring it back to council at a much later date, then the subcommittee would start working on it. So I think that's the primary advantage because this would be an ad hoc subcommittee. You know, the two members of the council will be working with the staff and sort of developing strategy and inputs into that development agreement. And at some later point, a more refined version that has been negotiated would come back to council for consideration and review.
Okay, so the sub, the subcommittee approach just sort of gets things moving and sharpened a little bit sooner than if it would, were to circle back later to the full council. So in terms of forming a subcommittee, we're thinking of two, two members. And so, you know, my, my comments are going to, you know, make sure to, to want to talk about things like how we are looking at climate, how we're looking at things like housing, how we're looking at things like water and how that all ties together. And so, so wanting to make sure that, that, that the comments go in and then we have a, a subcommittee that's sort of, I guess here's the question, will the subcommittee be able to take comment from the rest of the council immediately to, to begin crafting their side of this, this discussion?
Well, the only way to really do that would be to have a discussion at a city council meeting about that, just because the point of the two-person subcommittee is to have those two members basically do the work on behalf of the council. If the two members get input from the remaining three members of the city council, then that's a, you know, that would have, that discussion would have to take place at an open and agendized meeting.
Okay. Well, my thought is we have two attorneys on our council and I think having at, at least one of our attorneys participate in that would be important. Is there any interest from either Ms. Cobberstein or Mr. Doring in, in participating?
I would, I would recommend council member Cobberstein and council member Knutson for the skills that they have and the, and the disciplines that they have.
Well, how, Ms. Cobberstein, is that something that you're available for?
Yeah, you know, I think it would be, this, this is a very fast process. This schedule, we're going to be done in two weeks. So that what we're thinking? I think it's hard to even imagine what this job is because we have no idea what's in the applicant's draft. So.
But, but are you, are you able to make the time to participate in, in sort of seeing where things are and being part of this subcommittee?
Yeah, I, I have loads of time. I will, I will do it.
Mr. Knutson, is that something that, that you could make some time for?
I'd be happy to participate. I don't want to, I mean, I know stuff, but I, I, I wonder if Ms. Chateau would be at all interested, I, I, you know.
Thank you, council member Knutson. I'm going to pass on this one because of the homeschooling of kids. If it's going to be long meetings, it's better I don't.
Okay, okay. Look, I'll do it.
Well, thank you both for stepping in and it's appreciated. And thank you, everybody for staying focused and navigating this process. So with that, we have our subcommittee form. Yes, Ms. Cobberstein?
I'd just like the planning director to run through those dates one more time, if she would.
So just to review, the, the target dates we're looking at would be to circulate the, the current version of the draft development agreement this Thursday to our ad hoc subcommittee members. And then we would have a meeting, the, hold the date of May 6th. And that would again, would just be an internal meeting with the subcommittee staff and the city attorney. And then hold the date of May 11th. And that would be the earliest I would see that we could potentially start our first meeting with the applicant. And that's all, that's, that we really need to have that check in and, and see where we go from there.
Okay, thank you. I do have a 10 a.m. meeting already scheduled on the 6th or UBS, but otherwise I'm free that day.
So just to, just to clarify, you said you, you have a commitment at 10 a.m. on the 6th?
Yes.
Okay, so actually that, that was actually the time slot I was looking at. So we may actually need to bump the meeting back another day, but I'll, I'll be in touch with an updated schedule.
Sorry to add a wrinkle. I just realized that I may need to recuse myself from this project because my understanding is one of the members of the partnership is someone that I was in business with. It's been a long time. It's like 10, over 10 years ago, but I might look to the attorney, our city attorney Mizueta to determine whether I should recuse or not.
If you, if you no longer have a financial relationship with this individual and it's been, you know, at least a year, and it sounds like it's been a much longer time period than that, then you don't have a financial conflict in that person as, as long as there are no continuous, you know, ties, the person isn't a source of income to you, you're not otherwise in partnership with them, et cetera.
No, he's just a friend, but we were, we were in business, but it was over 10 years ago, so, okay, then.
Yeah.
Okay, so on this item, do we have what we need in terms of moving forward? Mr. Presswich, Mr. Rosa? Okay, very good. So with that, this is now the, that was the last item. So is, are there any other comments before we, we close the meeting? So with that, I, I'm going to thank the staff and the council for all the continued work through this challenging period. It's amazing what we've been able to continue accomplishing. I want to thank the community and just keep encouraging everybody to hang in there for a few more weeks and we'll have more clarity. This is hard, but if we stay, stay together, we'll get across the finish line together. I want to, once again, urge people to go to the Napa Valley Community Foundation website and learn how to donate. It doesn't need to be a lot, but if we all put in something, we can, we can carry each other through. So thank you, everybody, and we'll just keep pushing forward and we'll see you at the next meeting. Thank you.